We're gonna start with pledge.
Got everything up to stuff?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all for coming out today at the house. We'll do some introductions of folks that are new at the time that, you know, you're on, if we can save it for that. So, start with minutes from our October 1st of 2019 meeting.
I'll move it.
Sir, any discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for that. Got a handful of resolutions. After the resolutions, I'm gonna move some things around on the second page of the agenda so that each department head can do their reports along with their budget piece. Okay, but we'll start with the resolutions now. So HS1 is resolution authorizing the budget modification Department of Social Services, employment and training to accept federal trade act funding. I'll be put for a motion to move that resolution.
I'll move it.
Sir? Okay, I'm gonna first a second. Stacy? Read.
Yes, this is all federal money, 100% local share, or 100% federal funds, no local share, covering the expensive retraining workers that were displaced from their employment due to pre-trade agreements. So, we're asking to add $48,328 in money since.
Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor of the resolution? Any opposed? Thank you. HS2 is resolution authorizing the budget modification Department of Social Services to transfer funds to additional hours Administration Division. That's gonna cover us now through the agenda here.
Should get a student here. It's $15,000, mostly this has to do with staff turnover. Our social welfare examiners, we just hired seven new workers. The only reason that happened and we got backlogged is because this is one of those civil service tests that only the state gives once a year. Because we put so much investment into the training, we really are reluctant to hire these positions provisionally. So, we have gotten behind in our work, we have gotten behind in getting these folks up and running, and of course, they come to us right when heat starts, which is, you know, is a very, very busy time at DSS. So, we're asking for those additional hours for our social welfare as well as finance and account. They have vacancies with very time-sensitive things that can't just wait.
Who is for motion on the resolution?
Me.
Dan's second. Any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, just a little clarification where it's written up. Says that $15,000 will be coming from salaries, the other five will be from other supplies and expenses in that different line? Because it's wrote up that the whole 15 is coming from salary and wages.
There was originally a different modification, but we couldn't use the funds because there was an error in the way a budget modification was written out of OFA last month.
So, the whole thing's coming down to salary and wages?
Yes.
Okay.
There was an error on the narrative, sorry about that, Ken.
Any other questions? Goodbye.
I'm good.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Resolution carries. Resolution three, or I'm sorry, HS3, resolution authorizing budget modification Department of Social Services Mental Hygiene Division to transfer funds for a one-time contractual increase. But for motion on it, perfectly discussed.
I'll move it. Sir?
Okay, I got me for him. Stacy, are you gonna address this one?
Actually, Nicholson addresses.
Oh, that's, sorry.
So, as a result of the claims that get submitted from provider agencies to the state, they do a reconciliation for retaining those funds. If there's any what they determine to be an overpayment or the claims didn't justify the funds that we received, they will recover those funds or loss out of future payments for their payments to account. They do give us the opportunity to reallocate those where there are appropriate opportunities to do that. So, in this case, we had unspent dollars that the state would recover from 2017 and 2018, which we are able to reallocate to Oswego Hospital to offset the deficit that they experience in their clinic operations. So, between the two years, the total amount that we're able to reallocate to them is So, that funding is 100% on the showing that we've already received, and it would require approval to even a one-time adjustment to their contract to increase it, to allow the pass-through of that funding to them, and it would require a $45,000 budget modification between months in the budget.
Any questions? No questions, Tim's on?
I want to just mention, and Nicole please jump in on us, that Oswego Health, once they had contracted out for kind of this administration and oversight of their mal-hell clinic and inpatient unit, and once the new CEO moved that contract out of the way, paid them off, got them out of the way, and got his own management team in there, what have we seen now in the past, what, four, six months?
Yeah, they've been able to really turn around some of their clinic operations and put in place some productivity agreements with their clinical staff. As a result, they did have some staff turnover, but been successful in recruiting new staff. They finally have reached a point with their children's clinic where they have available capacity and open same-day access for children to start mal-hell services at the clinic. They have had some turnover in their school-based sites. They've been filling those positions and have increased their productivity even in the last school year, so before the end of last school year, they started to see an increase in productivity. At this point, they are even have applied to OMH to open up three additional school-based sites in the city of Oswego. So, there have been, have some really positive changes and turnaround in their availability of services and their management of productivity of their staff and their census.
So, all of the current, or at least last year's city of, or Oswego, I'm sorry, Oswego Health school-based offices are staffed and currently operating?
They're all currently operating. I believe there is one that they are covering with additional staff because they have to get onboard staffers for that position. I think it's one of the Fulton sites.
Okay.
But there's three new school sites they're opening in a city of Oswego.
City of Oswego asked them for some additional satellite clinics, so they have agreed to do that, and they have submitted applications to OMH to have three new sites approved in Minato Elementary, Riley Elementary, and Oswego Middle School.
Yeah. So, they're asking for more sites, although they have not fully staffed the ones they have, or?
No, they've fully staffed them.
Well, they have fully staffed. So, all the schools do have a fully functional?
Yes.
I thought you said there was one that was not.
They have somebody that hired for the one site, they just haven't really started
Thank you.
in the site on their own yet. And then the three new sites, they have to wait until they're approved by the Office of Mal-Hell, and then they will hire, recruit for those locations as well.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Resolution approving Parks and Recreation fee schedule, HS4. Put for motion?
I'll move it. Second.
Brian, are we doing more than just the security deposit issue, correct?
No.
This is the same schedule that we went over last year?
You approved it last year.
Okay, so all we have to do is the security deposit, okay. Does anybody have any questions for Brian about the security deposit? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Okay, HS5. Sir? Resolution authorizing budget modification for Parks and Recreation for camp policy improvements. Look for motion on that.
I'll make it.
Sue me. Multiple seconds. Bob, go ahead, Brian.
Alright, so this year just happened to be a perfect storm where the way the school calendar came out in snow days, that we were able, we had to operate one less week than we traditionally do at Camp Hollis. So, with that being said, and some additional other savings that staff was able to do, we have some money left over for this year only, and we're looking to take advantage of that and capitalize to get ahead and start buying some equipment and improvements to be done this year.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. HS6, similar resolution authorizing budget modification Department Parks and Recreation for camp derivatives improvements. For motion? Brad's second. I'll wait for Stacy to comment. What do we have? Dan, you made the motion and made second.
Yeah.
Okay. No discussion?
No, I made the motion.
Oh, you didn't?
That's fine.
Alright. Let's get it. I should, I should have written it down.
I have discussion. I wasn't trying to make a motion.
We get paid based on how many motions we make, right? I mean, I'm up to 15 bucks.
We have first and second. I just wanted to know if Stacy could be able to get?
This is two in a row I've said equipment, why is it equipment?
Is there any? The Curator will put together a wish list, because the other program's gonna mainly be Hollis. This is stuff that he's gonna need, it's like, he has a very minimal budget out there, so this is the, what is it looking for?
For a voter, for a check out there.
He's gonna do a lot of things out there, so he's on his own a lot, so he'll do more work with that.
Okay. Other questions?
I heard it was a hot topic Guinness app. I was gonna vote you.
You can bring those when you're ready.
You wanna bring up that we exceeded our revenue line?
No, I'm sure you'll win.
Alright. All those in favor of Tim's, I mean, the resolution? Any opposed? Question carries. Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. We are going to scoot straight to budgets, and then when we go, as we go through each of the department budgets, in order that they are listed at the bottom of the second page of the agenda, we'll pick up the appropriate RSPs and department reports, okay? Does that make sense? So, with that, we're gonna go for Oswego Industries first, and our representative to introduce.
Good afternoon, I'm Alyssa Viscom. I'm the Associate Executive Director for Programs at Oswego Industries, representing our request today for $85,000. This funding is utilized to offset deficits we have in programs for people who are not fully funded for the services that we receive and provide for them. We use that largely to cover our transportation costs. We transport individuals from all corners of the county into a location in the city of Fulton. There we provide rehabilitation, pre-vocational services, supportive employment services. We have a clinic on-site where people receive physical therapy, occupational therapy, behavioral counseling, as well as nutrition and some medical supports. We also do some adaptive equipment assessments there as well for individuals. We're actually working right now, in the year 2020, we will be transforming our sheltered workshops, which has for years been a long-standing part of the service that we provide. The state is no longer providing funding for sheltered workshops as of 20, as of the end of 2020. So, we're currently in our third phase of a workshop transformation plan, which is to support all of the individuals who are interested in finding more community-based supports, finding those supports. And that includes the launch of a community-based pre-vocational program, which brings individuals into the community for volunteer and vocational training in collaboration with local agencies and other not-for-profits for people experiencing hands-on community.
Phil and I had a nice conversation with Alyssa and a couple other folks over there today, and we'd like to recommend that we go ahead and move this budget. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, two opposed.
Pardon me?
Two opposed.
Two opposed. Okay, we got that, that's it. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move to veterans.
Do you want me to do my incoming update first?
It's your time, you go to town.
Alright, so we'll go into the budget first. Everything is fairly similar to last year's.
Hang on one second.
Okay.
When you do your budget, please tell us what page you're on.
Yeah. 117.
Yes, it starts on 117.
Thank you. So, you can hit us with any highlights that you want, or?
Okay.
Just special points, and then we'll have questions.
So, the only changes that you'll see in our budget is that our federal aid was increased from $8,529 to $10,000, it's on page 118. You'll also see a note there, Phil and I had a rather lengthy discussion about community outreach and being able to go out and represent the agency and the community. We have added in a little bit of money there to provide table covers for, with the agency emblem on them, to buy magnetic fitness cards, set up a booth at the fair, and participate in other wellness fairs throughout the community. There wasn't any community money budgeted prior to this, so we look to apply that to not only being more visible out in the community, but providing funding for things like our Veteran of the Year Dinner and other events throughout the year. So, those are the only two significant changes. Also, we are starting to do direct uploads, so I will foresee next year postage will go down significantly because we are eliminating a lot of our mailing going out of the agency. So, those, we will see an increase of $2,828 that includes contractual expenses and salary increases. Are there any questions for the budget?
I'll look for a motion to move the Veterans budget as proposed.
Move it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Go ahead and put your department report.
Departmentally, so, starting October 22nd, we are beta-testing the direct upload. So, the way we process claims in the Veterans Office, or used to process them, is the veteran would come in for an appointment, I facilitate, probably now alter paperwork, we would have to send the paperwork to the Buffalo Regional Office by mail, wait for the Buffalo Regional Office to send it to another mail intake center, and then it would get uploaded to the VA. This process would take anywhere between 18 and 22 days. So, it's 18 to 22 days post-appointment that the veterans filed doing nothing. It's simply traveling to the VA. So, on the 22nd of this month, we started doing direct upload through the VA centralized mail portal. To put it in perspective, I had a veteran come in on the 28th of October, I submitted his claim on the 28th of October, and it was approved with funding on the 1st of November. So, in three days, using direct upload, I had a claim approved and disseminated, and usually they take up to eight months. So, since the 22nd, we've processed 27 claims through the direct upload process, and fourteen of those have already been approved. So, obviously, it's gonna be a huge benefit to our veterans using this new system. Again, it's gonna cut down substantially on our postage, on the postage costs in the foreseeable future. For the month of October, we had 421 phone calls, 121 mail-in requests that we received via snail mail, and 114 walk-ins. 27% of our business was DSS, Medicaid keep letters and TDA referrals. However, on Monday, two days ago, we had 19 walk-ins and 28 phone calls. And so, we are seeing a substantial increase in traffic in the Veterans Office. We are working, working, working to get everybody assisted, but we have seen a significant increase in the Veterans Office. Tomorrow, I'll be presenting a Veterans Day presentation to Fairberry Elementary in Fulton. And on Friday, I will be presenting at Palermo's Veterans Day Celebration at Palermo, O'Malley. And that is all I have to report out on the veterans, oh, Blue Water Navy veterans. They just approved Blue Water Navy veterans to apply for Vietnam presumptive illnesses. This includes all Vietnam veterans that were in the Navy that had previously been denied benefits. I am scheduling into December already. The VA sent out a blanket letter to all veterans who had either applied for benefits before and were denied, or had never applied, and are now eligible. So, I am looking probably at seeing a massive influx of veterans coming in to apply for these benefits that the VA just approved. And now I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jamie? So, ask for report.
Thank you.
Budget. Just a point of reference, within our packets, you do have what used to be the JV 905 for each department, so as we're doing budgets, if you wanna look through those, I have, Steve said it was right up to date to the day that the packets were created.
It'd be kinda nice if they were in the same line with the budget, if you feel like here's where we stand, managers were looking at them.
Why are you looking at me? I didn't.
You're looking at me, I was looking back at you. Nice to have you on, Chris. Maybe we could put on a tablet.
We covered that, you got your opinion?
Okay. Alright, thank you very much, Jamie. Let's move on to Youth Bureau. What do you want to do first?
Parks and Rec is on page 122. Like I said, it's for introduction, and Zach Grulick with me, he's our Coordinator of Parks and Recreation Youth Development, and Becky Bachelor, who is our Senior Account for here with us today. So, with the Parks and Rec budget, we held it pretty stable to where we were. Changes that we did make, minimal, most of the changes that we made, you'll see in lines, we did it within, so we moved from one line to another. So, for example, our summer program at Camp Serby is not the same as it used to be, so we took our AmeriCorps piece from that, and Zach took those two members and reduced it and made it into one full-time member for Camp Hollis, which he will look to be moving forward with soon, so that he can use that person to recruit and things promotional during this time of the year, once we get to the, you know, once we're into January, which I think would be beneficial, because Zach's got some pretty, pretty good goals for 2020, highlighting this year, we served more kids this year with that one last week. So, we did one last week this year, but we still serve more kids than we did last year. Zach wants to see that next year, when we put that week back in. He's also been aggressive, we talked, we got the blessing from Becky, and we were gonna reduce the rate for the day campers to?
$100? $100.
$100 a week, by a study that our competition is in that range. And what we do with yearly for the overhead for what it costs on that day camp program, we will well exceed our numbers, and projectively, we could go way past this year's numbers, because being that number, that it is going to be more affordable for people to use the day camp program at Hollis. So, that's one of the changes we're looking to do. We project more revenue, but it's gonna cost us to actually go to camp for that. We are probably one of the only departments that has to deal with the minimum wage increases every year that the state hasn't put in there, so that has been impacted in our budget, but we balanced it out. That also changes a little bit your senior members, that as minimum wage continues to increase, you have to look at the senior members who can get passed quite quickly if you don't move with that. And other than that, I think, you know, we're also looking at, with the new web pages, it's gonna be very interactive to, between calendars, being on there, being able to book yourself right online, even though our rental pieces are not really an issue, it should be a strength for renting going out forward, as well as for campers to register online as well. So, keeping up with the times, that's, I think, again, a piece that should show our revenue line to continue to increase, keeping the costs where they were. Anything I could do?
Questions on the Recreation budget? So, should we move them together, department with Youth, or should we just do this one now? I don't think we're there right now on this one, so look for motion on it. Recreation budget, that's?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, going to Youth next.
Youth goes 126. Again, we have a line pretty much with our, with our budget, the only changes you're going to really see in there are the contractual changes and our AmeriCorps grant that we received, new three-year grant. We applied for less members based upon the turnout from what's there, so that impacts the overhead cost for what we have. So, our grant is a little bit less, so that changes the amount that is, goes along with that. The only other change we did is we did, like, we've had a summer AmeriCorps assistant in the budget in the past, it's fully paid for through AmeriCorps. We did not have that last year, but we put it back, the summer is the busiest time for AmeriCorps, that's when they have the most members. So, that position will help with monitoring and with assisting other different sites as we go forward. So, again, with Youth Bureau, projecting some new programming, but keeping it all internally within the budget to not ask for any additional funding. Not much.
Question for Brian? Okay, all those in favor, or let's have a motion on Youth.
I'll move it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well done, sir. You?
I'll just minimally keep it quick. For those that didn't hear that, sorry to broaden it up, but the assistance of Mr. Page, County Parks and Rec Program is gonna get two ready grants. One is for $500,000 for Camp Hollis to do the block and repair stabilization work, and another's $400,000 for Independence Trail. So, those are two pretty big pieces that we'll be working with over the next time period to go with, so we're pretty happy with that. Quickly, just, we have our community service forum, I think you all probably got an email from me that that's coming up at Dale's Club on the 21st. We're looking to have in excess of 50 different agencies will be on hand, providing information on different services, these are some in Oswego County. And then just, as we go through this thinking of what we did just from the Halloween season, dropped in the math, that planned a student of May had just from the programming we did, we served additional 2,000 kids just over the Halloween season, just doing different state events, and then we did an event at Oswego State last week, which really complimented for the college, that they really put out the red carpet for these kids, that they had all the players available format of the game, if you saw these kids faces with this, you know, these are a lot of their heroes, for lack of better words, seeing these hockey players out there, so I think it was really a good event. So, doing that, and then wearing the city hat, like Ben and Mr. Remmans over there and I are putting together new tree lighting this year for the city of Oswego, which I think is gonna be very big, and Becky, Becky's part of that, so that's really it, I won't take any more time on what we're doing.
Okay, any questions for Brian? Alright, let's move on to Sarah in the offstage.
Okay, we'll start on page 119. And I tried to hold the line. And I tried to hold the line. As we've got the consulting areas where you just put on page one twenty with a consulting line. We do have a new registered dietitian this year and her came in late in the year, going into twenty-one as well. And her hourly rate was substantially higher than our previous registered dietitian. So that did increase that line from twenty nineteen adopted to what our twenty-twenty request is. The other fees and services, that line looks like it's quite a substantial increase, but that's where all of the unmet needs money has gone to. So the services that we're providing through unmet needs, that's, that's where that line item is, which includes transportation to the nutrition sites, additional social adult pay, additional consumer directed home services. And that's where we would have the transportation when we get that running for out-of-county doctor appointments. And then our next big increase, which there's an RFP that goes along with it, is for our meals program. So on page one twenty-one, all their supplies and expenses. This was a year that the RFP had to go out for senior nutrition services. It came back substantially higher than I was anticipating. We had a little back and forth. They did bring it down. This year, we're paying five dollars sixty-eight cents per meal. We did get it negotiated down to five dollars ninety-nine cents from what they proposed at six dollars fifteen cents. And with that contract, we contract for two hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred meals, and that's a guaranteed meal number that they receive. So when we get the bill, if they provide fifteen thousand meals, we still pay a monthly amount. If they provide thirty thousand meals, we still have that monthly amount up to the two hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred meals. Anything over that, then that's where I come back and say, do we start a waitlist? How do we proceed with the meals? But that being said, the new anticipated cost for the year, just the meals program, is another seventy-seven thousand sixty-six dollars from the initial budget. Bringing it to, for just the meals program in that line, one million four hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. Of that, with the grant funding that we received, plus contributions for the meals, we're anticipating a portion of that, fifty-two percent of that is on the county tax base, or seven hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Sarah, you do charge for some meals, correct?
We don't charge, we can't charge. We let them know they can contribute to the cost.
Where, where does that revenue of?
That is in, it's included in the programs for the aging. So on page one twenty-one, we're
So it's combined in there somewhere?
Yes. And we're anticipating a hundred thousand dollars in contributions for meals over in the note side. That number has been going down. We've been getting fewer and fewer contributions. So that is, that number has gone down, that's why.
We're going, are we going to be, if you're, are you going to be able to add sites that you talked about?
If we add sites, it would be additional cost. So I asked about, as, as part of the RFP, I added in what it would cost to add, say if we went to a Swiggle or in a little location. They provided me with a per meal cost for the minimum number of meals for that site, and it's about thirty thousand dollars to add an additional site, and so an additional thirty thousand dollars. So at this time, with the costs we already have, I don't think, I would love for you all to say, yes, Sarah, let's add an additional site. I would love for you to say that, but I'm thinking that probably you'll say, let's stay status quo for the time being. So it's not included in that number.
Okay. Any other questions about Sarah's budget? For a motion then? Or amendments? Go ahead, Dave.
Make the motion to approve.
Okay. So Brad, second? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What was the number on additional meals? Six, it said the additional thirty thousand?
Approximately additional thirty thousand dollars for a Swiggle. We had looked into on the site here in the Swiggle.
Okay.
And that's open three days a week. And it's, I think it was like fifteen hundred meals. Off the top of my head, I did it.
Okay. Other questions?
So can you, Sarah, say that? Couple of years ago, we did, we put together kind of the department head, you know, wish list, right? Have we done anything looking at doing something like that this year? I mean, I love hearing it, that's budget time of all the great stuff that we're going to be able to do next year, but there's obviously stuff maybe we don't have funding for, or this is the first time we've heard it, and now we're only, you know, a week or two away from next year's budget being finalized. Maybe could we put a pin in it, but look at it for next year, maybe for the following year it makes sense? I mean, again, it's not the first I've heard this, but probably not the best time to discuss it. So I don't know, maybe we could set something up, maybe we could start looking at that department head wish list again, and especially with the grant writing stuff. Just a thought.
Yeah. You said, when we're talking about, you know, how we have some people donate back for meal services, right? You said that funding was down this year?
Yes, we, we've received fewer contributions, total dollar figure. The last couple of years, that number's been going down. We had put in the business reply mail, so we were giving our clients or patrons no stamp. They didn't have to put a stamp on the envelope so we can get the, get that contribution back. That ended up costing us more with the contributions being down and then that additional cost, because it's almost a thousand dollars just for the permit.
True.
And then plus the postage for that. And with the continued decrease in contributions, we will not be continuing that practice.
Sure. And is there, how do you guys publicize that, that that's an option for people to do in the community? Just through your?
We, we put it out each month with the recipients who receive their meals. And when they get their menu, they get a little contribution letter stating, these are the number of days you received meals this month, the number of meals. This, the contribution for two meals a day is four, suggested contribution is four dollars a day. So, but no one is denied service for unwillingness or inability to contribute. And those are words that the states, as we have to use. So they get those every month, and then at the congregate sites, they also receive it. It's not publicized other than on our literature out in the community, no. It will be on the new website, though, that anybody can, you know, access and contribute.
And, and just last question. If you were able to see an uptick in those funds, for example, if there was a fund drive or some initiative that went behind that, can that funding shouldn't be used for implementing an additional site?
Yes, it can only be used as per state regulations. It can only be used to enhance the program. It cannot be used to supplement.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Just a brief comment, I'd like to thank Sarah for, she did some work on looking at the Saguado site. City's a willing partner in terms of putting together and improving the site that would have been five. So unfortunate that, you know, we're thirty thousand dollars short from being able to implement that, given that the city, I think, probably had one of the largest populations. And so, and yet doesn't have the site. So, I mean, I'd like to see this committee try to find a way and be able to fund thirty thousand dollars to get that site back to, to the city. Given that we have a partner within the city of Saguado that is willing to rehab the site that they were looking at.
Yes. If, if this RFP hadn't come up, come in so much higher, I probably would kind of try to fight for a little more. I'm not done looking at other avenues as part of the business document that the state is really having us move ahead on. I'm looking to see what else we can do that maybe we can increase revenue somewhere else, maybe put some of that funding towards opportunities in the future. Right now, I, like I said, I wasn't expecting that contract to come back at such, such a high price to think without additional concessions, I guess.
All right. All set? All in favor of moving the off-site aging budget?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll be going to my updates.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have many, I'll, I'll be quick, I'll be quick like Brian. We are still in the middle of HEEP, because HEEP does open earlier for seniors who received the benefit earlier. So we're still processing, getting those applications to, to Stacy and for people to process those. Insurance counseling, we've received a couple of, you may have received calls as well. We've received calls, and we do have some people that are a little upset because we have no appointments available. There, it's just with the number of people with the complexity of insurance, all the appointments are booked up. What we're doing is taking names and we are calling them between appointments when there's time, or if there's a last-minute cancellation, they're on the phone talking with people. So we are still taking names, probably won't be able to fit anybody else in in a face-to-face appointment unless someone cancels well enough advanced to get somebody in. But please be aware that you may get some calls on that. What we're doing going forward in next year with, we did have new people this year, we'll be having Medicare one-on-ones throughout the community, so people can go and hear about Medicare and the process of Medicare, and maybe that'll relieve some of the anxiety during this time of year, so that not so many people will want to come in and actually see somebody face-to-face. But we do know that there's, we have received, some of the calls that come in aren't so happy when they, they find out there's no appointments, so I'm sure you might be hearing it in the community as well. We received our annual review back from the SOFA, the State Office for the Aging, and there was no corrective action measures. So that's the first time, even though they've been small, the corrective measures that we've had to, to make, this is the first time we've never had a report where there's been no corrective action measures reported, so we're very happy about that. Our Santa for Seniors program, we, we're still taking names for that. So if you know of anybody that could benefit, any seniors that could benefit from a little gift, certainly get their name to us. We have nine agencies, churches that have signed up so far to participate in it, to get the gifts out. So we're moving forward with that. And the biggest thing I want to share with everybody, over the weekend, I received a notification or email. I don't know if you know her this or not, Sarah, but our, someone cloned our, or is posing as the Swiggle County Office for the Aging, sending out messages to our contact lists, saying, stating that if you click on this, then you can get a phone call back and you can, you know, we can track your status and who you speak to. And it's from Nigeria. So
How did they get your contact to us?
I, I don't think they ha, I, I don't know. I don't know how they got it. I don't know, we have, a complaint was put into Facebook, so they know. I reached out to county attorney, and he also reached out to Greg Powellin to see if they can find out.
Oh, are your, are your friends of the site or links public? Are you a page or are you a, like a person?
This one is a person. Let's start, I set it up as a person, then I have a page. So what I'm going to be doing probably is unfriending everyone that's as a person and just having the page referring them all to our page.
I think that's the way to go.
Yes.
Because if your, if your, if your contacts were public, then they could mine the contacts that way.
Yeah. We never publicized it as, because I have it like, Swiggle County was the first name and Office for the Aging as a second name. I never thought anybody'd find that when they're searching. Our page is a Swiggle County Office for the Aging separate. So when people were requesting, I'm like, oh, I just was saying, okay, we'll go with it and we'll have to. But now I'm regretting it. Yeah. So, yeah, so we'll be going in to defriend all those people and letting them know, because there's like over two thousand. And I just thought when we kept getting more and more, I'm like, what better way to get the word out on our programs than to keep all these people? Because, yeah, so. So we'll see, the, the people who, I mean, the, the person who saw this, like, I don't remember from Nigeria, I'm not going to do this, and they immediately reported, they reported it to Facebook, and they sent it to us to let us know that it was happening. So I'm hoping that no senior will fall victim to a Nigerian scam.
You're saying you were not up and working at three ten AM?
No. Yeah, so Brian.
Just came back from Nigeria. Have you listed any help, maybe some IT or anything? I mean, ma, I mean, maybe that page just needs to come down immediately.
I, well, we did reach out to county attorney and Greg Powellin. So he's looking and they had recommended, but I certainly, I don't know at this time, I don't think it's tied to our page. I think this is separate and apart.
No, but the one that is up as a person.
Right.
Rather than just unfriending, just that you just delete it and just use the public, just use the page as opposed to the person method, because that's what the page is for. And you're not actually collecting friends. Because really, if you, I think using that method, if they friended you and you accepted that, because you're accepting anybody to be a friend if you're trying to, then they may, they can see that list as well. That may be another way that they were able to mine that list.
Can you send out like just a blast, please see this site and then close it, something like that?
Yeah.
If that makes sense. Because there's some folks who may only have this as their point of attack.
Right.
I know, and you hate to just leave the hanging.
Yeah, but, you know, it is, you know, so if it's the difference between having somebody get scammed and not.
Oh, it's got to come down, I'm saying before it comes down.
We did that with the Camp Hollis stage, we advertised it. We did that exactly.
That could potentially be something if we have a, a social media policy for, to put in there that there now, a specific type of page needs to be used.
Yeah, when I first created it, I mean, I, I probably didn't know what I was doing. Obviously, I didn't know what I was doing. I thought that you had to have an email address attached to it and set it up that way as a person, and then you could have a page off of that person. So that's how, that's how it all started. I didn't want the page to be mine.
But you could do it as, it could, the page could be in your name, even though you, you know, because you, because they're not. But I think it's something to look into. Definitely not for today.
How many do we, Phil, how many do we have? How many, do all of our departments have their own Facebook page?
Almost.
Actually, Department of Tourism might be able to help you out too, because they're really happy, you know, doing that, heavy duty and mining and advertising marketing. Okay. Any other questions for Sarah? Yes, sir.
Just the, what do you, what do you expect as an impact then for the HEEP appointments that are full? And people aren't even looking in, so what's the, they'll still be able to make the applications, right?
Well, HEEP fits that, there's no appointments for HEEP people, that's, that's going full. I mean, it opens on Tuesday. So we'll be mailing out applications as people request them. We'll be seeing people because we have three workers in that. And that is, we, we don't have any appointments, it's just walk-in, that's the insurance.
Okay.
And that will, right now, because we've been doing it, we have, we, we're doing a weekly callback list now, and it's been probably fifty to seventy-five people that have been on the list. So each week, they just read through it and call the people back, try to do it over the phone. If not over the phone, try to mail more information. So leading up to open enrollment, it's, it's probably going to continue at that, it might be even more.
When, when is open enrollment?
December seventh, which is a Saturday, so probably we'll work on Saturday.
You anticipate it, and all those, you're getting seventy-five, is it seventy-five a week or is that a rolling?
If we're not able to, as we get closer, we can refer them on to other agencies that can help. They go back to the State Office for the Aging, and then the State Office for the Aging assigns it to, whether it's the Medicare Rights Center or Empire Justice, they will assign it to another agency that they're working with to follow that person.
Okay. So you anticipate then that those people will be able to be taken care of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But a lot of people want that face to face and they want it like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This, this is in part because every time you turn on the television, you ever got a commercial? And my wife is getting literally six a day that are, you need to review, you need to make a call. You know, so I mean, it's, it's not that we're not doing anything different or being lax or anything. It's the industry that has said, well, we're going to be more competitive and we want you to change to us. And it's just, I mean, it's, it's everywhere right now.
Creates a lot of anxiety, so if they don't get a hold of us, it, it just ramps up their need to speak to someone that would share.
All right, okay, let's move on to Public Social Services and, and you've got a whole bunch of stuff. Stacy, I think, well, you have the floor, that's the director. Do you want to introduce some folks too?
Sure, before we move on, there was, there are RFPs, we have to vote on the RFP for the meal contract.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot about the RFP. I know Stacy's got a stack of them, so, sorry about that. Go ahead, do you want to talk about the RFP?
Well, we kind of already addressed it as part of my budget, it's just the meals one, yes. So I don't know if anybody else, yes.
Go ahead. How, how many recipients have received that RFP and then were you comfortable with the number of folks who responded? Or do you feel, I mean, obviously.
One response.
So it's going to, same for folks who've been there in the past?
Right. We had, there were some questions that were posed to us from other potential respondents on the question, can we utilize your jail to prepare the meals? And can you delay the, the awarding the contract until we can secure a place of our own to prepare meals? Or the congregate sites till we, until we can, you know, make those contacts and contracts for the meal sites? And we really needed to have it for January 1 or I needed to know for budget purposes as well what the cost would be. So there, I think, I mean, I know the OCO, the only reason we only have the one respondent is because they're the only ones that can do the meals, the nutrition counseling, the nutrition education. They schedule the transportation, even though it's not their contract, they do the scheduling for the transportation for the participants. So I'm confident that their per cost is, per cost per meal, or the cost per meal is online with what our surrounding counties do. Cause I did a little off the cuff survey, some of them, I mean, there, there's been the low amount of $4 and change, but they had their own kitchen, so they didn't have that additional cost record in. Up to over $9 a meal. So, and, and they weren't doing the additional, they weren't doing the counseling and the nutrition education. They were just preparing and delivering the meals.
Yeah, $9, you can just Taco Bell's like 4.50.
And, and part of the additional cost with this too is the state nutrition regulations just came out and the quantity or serving the fruits and vegetables went up as well as whole grains and low sodium or no, basically there was no sodium, so the cost per ingredients has gone on for them as well.
Do you believe that the, the cost is reasonable even though there's only one respondent?
I do believe the cost is reasonable. We've just been really lucky here at the county. Other counties do have wait lists or they limit the areas that can receive a meal. And we've always been very lucky that the legislature overmatches the amount of money that's necessary for the grants to make sure that everybody, anyone, anywhere receives the meal. And that's really part of the cost because the number of meals that we are getting out to everyone in the county.
You don't want to use Krabhub with Taco Bell.
Yes.
I don't think that's, that's by the nutritional requirements.
Yeah, and I need, so.
You can't serve grade B meat, I guess.
It needs to be two thirds of the daily recommended value.
Maybe that would be us.
This meeting is being recorded. Uh, okay. So look for a motion on the RFP.
Make the motion.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? Stuff on that one.
Yeah.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Now or which was Stacy said? Give some introductions first.
Um, yes, so, you know, Veronica and Nicole, does everyone, Bill, you want to introduce yourself?
Bill Martin, I'm Senior Account for Employment and Training.
Nice to come in.
Alongside all these cast of characters.
Who's your new hire in the blue back there?
Should be remaining anonymous.
And you know Marty, but I'll let my services team here introduce themselves.
I'm Kathy Bilversio, I'm a grade B supervisor of the legal department at the Department of Social Services.
I'm Sarah Finley, I'm a grade B supervisor and I supervise child protective.
I'm Karen Rowan, I'm one of the attorneys for the Department of Social Services.
All right, so we'll start with malhygiene and that is on page 97. 97?
97.
You have an older version. Oh, I don't know what page I have. I picked out the ones that weren't, because I decided to break them down. I'm picking on 97 and 98. So the malhygiene budget is, comes out of the decrease in local share of just under $20,000 in 2019. Primarily, there's, there's some shifts in the individual budget lines, but primarily the result, the, the decrease results from a reduction of one staff position and the reduction of anticipated expense for 730 exams, which were always 100% local share. So in, in the other budget lines, there is some movement between some increases in contract lines between the Oasis and the mental health services. There's a decrease in the staffing expenses. So there's some, that's, you know, you'll see some shifting around between it, but the resulting end is a reduction in local, local share. We do have an increase in the Oasis revenue and expenses. That actually began in 2019 as a result of receiving additional $60,000 from Oasis, which has passed through money to Farnham to implement some jab based substance abuse services, which began in August of this year. So that, that is already in, in place. There's a reduction in the OMH state aid, but an increase in the federal aid. So there's a equal amount there, reduction and increase between those lines that are balancing each other, each other out. We're receiving more of the federal money currently. There is an anticipated partial quota in state aids. The state agencies are doing that based on physician title code that providers submit and then are consolidated to school reports. So it's non across the board, so it'll increase, but that won't be definite until the state passes for the next budget. And it would be in the state aid letters at, at that time. So that anticipated increase is included in revenue amounts. Which if it's not received, the course funding contract amounts would be, would be changed as well.
Any questions? Have a motion from the mental health or, or malhygiene budget?
Sorry, a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. What's next?
Uh, we're gonna move right into employment and training.
136.
Right, quick question. Are our department heads that, are, are they free to go if they want to? I mean, we're gonna be here probably for another.
I think it's free.
I just didn't know if they were.
They are absolutely free to go.
Yeah, my folks know.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone knew that we're always.
I need to pay women.
If you want to stick around that fun time.
Yeah.
You would.
Yes.
People are.
Kind of.
Sorry, Stacy.
We can trust him.
So thank you, Nicole, no more than $5 million with a local share of 146,389. I would say that it's, you know, a pretty incredible of our state funding. Federal funding in there to provide for some vulnerable immediate services. So bravo to all your work this past year. Bravo for all your work this past year. Um, the same goes, uh, with Bill. Your, uh, Royal Anna Maxwell.
Think one twenty-five?
Oh, on ours, I've got employment and training, I paid one thirty-six.
Yep.
Okay.
One thirty-six.
Okay, just a word.
No, that's fine. Um, we did see an increase in LEOA funding for this current year, which was actually quite been a big surprise because we've either been level or decreasing for the past few years. So, um, kind of the biggest thing is, um, our director, because we were retiring in June of twenty-twenty. Um, so, we're proposing to do a three-month side-by-side hire, um, for April and June of next year, so that, uh, there's a full, uh, outpouring of knowledge to the new, to the new staff.
As full as it can be.
As full as it can be.
So, that would be filled with an S G fifty for authority, which is coordinator client services title, lower than what the director's title and the principal title used to be. And then they would, that candidate would up up to the director's title initially.
Um, the youth portion of our funds did receive the biggest amount of increase. Um, so, work experience line for youth went up a pretty good amount. Again, also, minimum wage affects that dollar amount as well. Um, it's going up seven cents. Um, we anticipate being able to serve, um, the same number of kids, um, in this coming year. And, probably the other item that went up was, because there was an increase in funding, we were able to, um, increase budget amounts for out-of-job training for, uh, new clients and, um, tuition payments towards education.
Any questions, Bill, on this budget?
Sure. Yeah, just, uh, see a couple of new positions. It looks like coordinator of client services and then we have a...
Senior funds, okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious more so, uh, just about the coordinator client services, just what that, is that all?
That's the temporary three-month position to shadow, job shadow.
That is where it's bigger than that.
That's where that one is. And then, the senior employment specialist is, we have one retiring. We also have a senior employment specialist retiring in March. And so, they did a shadow there too.
Okay.
Okay, and so that's a three-month shot on that as well. And then that'll, then the balance rolls, then that person will go into the retired person's slot.
Gotcha.
And then the balance of that money is, is in one of the other employment specialist lines at the top.
Is that historically what we've done in the past for that senior employment?
We actually haven't had a situation where we've had so much knowledge. This person also has been, would have counted for thirty years.
Forever.
So, we had, we had three leadership positions in this whole division and it's a very complex bureaucracy to move through in order to bring, um, all the money dollars.
Yes, so they need time to grow.
Thank you.
Right, I mean, no, it's not a normal thing. It just was, in this particular instance, due to the amount of years of service that are disappearing.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Other questions? It's pretty good to me.
No, zero local share.
Yeah. Look for a motion on that budget.
Move down one second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, our DSS.
All right.
Um, maybe we, we'll start with the request for proposals and the DSS contracts. Um, and, uh, missing from the list on the agenda, uh, we've got almost all of them, but I believe, uh, Onondaga County Purchasing also sent in, uh, one of our employment and training, um, RFPs that went out. And we'd like to award seventeen thousand for the Career Pathway Systems Services of Dr. January first. Uh, this is the metrics morning. This is the online morning that we've had up and running for the last few years. If you've served on the W D, um, Workforce Development Board, then you know well, uh, how, uh, incredibly much impact we've had, uh, and how much our employers in the region depend on, uh, this online training tool. So, um, do we know them? They've got seven. It was on my list, but they didn't leave it up here. So, I just want to make the, uh, New York Wired for Education company, uh, proposal.
It's done.
It's done.
I think it's in the packet.
It really needs to, uh, be in the packet. It was, uh, the list being hammered, sent to Cheryl and myself. So...
How much is it? Seventeen thousand?
Seventeen thousand.
Well, we got a copy of that round and then just cut it off.
Well, it was the only vendor that responded, as I recall.
Oh, you don't have a copy of it either?
I do not. I only have my own, my own little synopsis here.
Can we...
Just send in with your committee requests. Did you assume Dan, you know, that was good?
Can we approve it, um, pending, um, county administrators checking it out?
Maybe it was the only, the only return.
Send in your email.
Uh, probably not mine, probably, um, Chris Williams' notes. I can send it to you, Cheryl. New York Wired for Education.
Yeah, it's in my, okay, there's a memo here dated October twenty-seventh. Uh, to me from you, listing, listing all the, uh, these awards are covered in the twenty-twenty protected budget.
But it doesn't, it's not, it's not in these, it's just in the...
It's in the memo that you sent us. Yeah, it's in the memo.
I think it's in the best.
It's in my memo. Okay, so we're good?
Yeah, would you get the memo?
If it's a, if it's a professional service award, that has to be, is this an amendment? I'm sorry, is this an amendment to a current contract or a new award?
It's a new award.
Okay, so if this gets approved here, what happens is, a resolution will be generated awarding a professional service to the, now going to legislative.
Okay, so I'm not going to have to present any of this again. You know, go right from this committee to the full legislature.
Right, all these are already incorporated into your draft budget, correct?
Yes, and they're all in my draft.
Okay, so that goes to finance personnel to the legislature. And then the contracts themselves, uh, go to the legislature.
All the other ones came through Dan to me and Cheryl and, um, uh, we're all set with all these others. It was just the metrics.
So, if you may have a copy of the contract, uh, that's to, need to amend, uh, pin to the resolution or standard resolution warning, professional service contract.
Okay.
All right, sorry for the confusion. I'll look for a motion on the, uh, Career Pathways System Services.
I'll move that.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who was the awardee?
The awardee is New York Wired for Education, is the name of the company.
Same people that did it before?
Yep.
Okay.
All righty, then, um, going right along, uh, I, I just want to say with the, I know it says Oswego County Purchasing out here, um, I do want to say though, all of these documents that were sent to you showing, um, uh, the companies that responded and what the evaluation was, uh, this is exactly what we provided to Oswego County. We, we worked in teams.
You need to Onondaga.
I need to Onondaga. We worked in teams and then, um, we filled this out and this is exactly, it came back exactly what we provided to them. So, uh, I don't know if you want me to go through each one, um, but basically, these are all existing mandated services that can be done by our contracted agencies at less cost than we can do it for ourselves in-house. Um, these have been existing, uh, some up to thirty years with our parent education. Um, I did provide you an overview, um, and my memo dated October twenty-seventh and then, uh, you have the evaluations that myself and members of our staff completed. Um, we did not award just based on the lowest price. Uh, there were a couple of vendors that gave a lower price, but then didn't have the same deliverables or contracted services that were needed. Uh, so, a lot of work went into this. Um, I don't know if you, if anyone has any questions for me about these awards. Again, this would be parent education, transportation services, homeless housing services, our school-based preventive services, our adolescent sex offender treatment program, and the housing program.
Okay, so, I guess, um, what I'm wondering is who, uh, is it in the memo will you select it as opposed to on the, these sheets?
There, there should be, um, both. There should be both. Um, but in the memo, yes, it's, uh, right at the top. You have charities for parent ed services.
Uh, well, let's just, let's go through them in order of the memo.
Okay.
Um, so, child welfare services, DSS, parent education program services.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was a single vendor, Catholic Charities, a promotion.
I'll move that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Second one is the, um, transportation program, Oswego County DSS. Um, that's also Catholic Charities and, uh, they were the only vendor that responded, three hundred and nine thousand dollars, uh, a promotion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, school-based preventive services for Oswego County Public Schools, uh, Liberty Resources. Uh, again, the only vendor. Six hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred ninety-three annual cost.
So, this is one where they actually are asking, uh, for a different amount over the five years of the contract. You give them a three-year contract and then an opportunity to renew in years four and five, as long as their performance is good.
Okay, so it is based on performance?
Yes, and it's, and they're very, uh, minimal increases, as you can see, you know, from six hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred ninety-three to this following year at six hundred and eighty-one, five seventy. This allows for COLA increases in the wages of this vendor.
Look for a motion.
Oh, I'll go.
Yeah, yeah, one, second.
Say.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, um, you had said that some of them were not the lowest bidder. Uh, was this one of the ones where, was, was the only bidder though?
This was the only vendor. Correct.
They had been previously providing it.
Correct.
Well, do you happen to know the solicitation process? Were there others who weren't solicited?
Yes.
Okay, but nobody chose them. It's a large contract, you have only one bidder, so it's, okay.
One of the things we were asking for is because we have open cases, uh... One hundred and ten families we're working with right now. Uh, we would be wanting to be able to transition those families right over and so we would need a vendor who is able to, uh, who knows connections, the child off their data system. Um, and, although I was willing, uh, to entertain a vendor who needed to get up and running in connections, that might have been an issue that shied people off.
So, this has almost become like a sole source thing? It almost seems like we would be, almost impossible to find someone who would satisfy those requirements. Is that true or no?
Um, I think it would be a heavy lift, but not necessarily true if I'm providing those services in Onondaga or an adjacent county and can, can kind of bring in some expertise. Um, I did have a few conversations. You know, I've been working on this early in the year, trying to woo other vendors to our midst and, um, to answer questions prior to the R F D going out, knowing, let's talk to vendors.
Okay, um, any other, just, we, we got a first and second on this one, right?
Yeah.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is the, um, adolescent sexual offender treatment program services. And this one, there was more than one?
There was.
And, uh, but you selected the higher bid.
I did. I'm gonna need it.
I'll give a little discussion, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll move through session.
A second.
Uh, so, can, just, uh, better services or more, or is this the family, the company that did it before?
This is the company that we have had a, uh, a contract with. Um, however, um, everyone, um, has a different philosophy and strategy in delivering services. Um, and as a team, uh, we weren't convinced that the, uh, company number two, um, just doing office-based, we recognized just how much home-based, uh, engagement, especially with adolescent sex offenders, uh, easy to do. Uh, there was also only one strategy. It's an evidence-based curriculum that's used by company number two. Company number one, uh, actually has delivered, um, adolescent sex offender treatment program services in Onondaga County for thirty years. Um, so they have a lot of experience in this and, uh, brings that expertise, that technical expertise into Oswego County and they have a variety of evidence-based programs and strategies. Um, these are very complex, uh, family systems that we're dealing with.
Any questions?
Yeah. How, how long have we utilized Huntington for states? Is it ten plus years? Am I reading that?
Correct. Ten plus years with, uh, this particular, um, adolescent sex offender treatment.
And so you remain concerned transferring over to the Child Advocacy Center would be the evidence-based programming that they're using? We don't want to be interrupting services?
No, um, both of these vendors use that same group, uh, evidence-based curriculum that you have to be certified in.
Okay.
But, um, uh, the C A C only uses that.
Okay. And Huntington's an Onondaga-based center.
Um, they, their home office is in Onondaga, but they also are in Delaware, Madison, Higga, and Oswego, I believe, are the four counties, and Cortland that would be parent too. So, they, they have a more of a regional stretch like Liberty Resources does. It had a very stable, um, staffing as well.
Any other questions?
As, you know, we as legislators are really part of the R F P, um, process and looking over, um, I don't know if, uh, let's say, there's Drum's point is that one of the other competing process, uh, R F Ps was from a local Oswego County organization. Do you take that into account or do you feel like no matter what, you're going to go with whatever provides what you believe is the best service?
Uh, I would definitely take it into account, but I do see Huntington as a Oswego County agency. You know, they are regional, so they have a high, higher stretch and fifty years ago, they started, no, hundred years ago, I think, yeah, I just, it, this week is their hundredth year, yeah. So, a hundred years ago, they started in Onondaga County. But they've had a very robust presence here in Oswego County for more than ten years.
Any questions?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Got that?
Yep.
Uh, family counseling program.
Yes. So, family counseling program, um, we have, uh, three, uh, folks apply for this. Um, and, uh, again, we, um, have, uh, recommending that we stay with our present contract with Huntington Family Centers. Um, the Salvation Army, uh, they were, uh, a little more expensive and did not actually provide as much, um, uh, service delivery, uh, their deliverables, uh, did not have as robust a package as Huntington Family Center. Um, and then, uh, Family Matters is new to Oswego County, um, and they're actually a, a therapy, um, clinic, I guess you'd call it. Um, and, uh, it was, Family Matters was all office-based, um, no experience with connections. You know, all of these that I'm telling you about, they all had to feed into the web-based connections, uh, primary case record. Um, and, uh, billing, you know, it, I was a little suspect, uh, there was a few, uh, pieces here and proposals with, uh, folks feeling they could back off of some funding from us, and this was won, uh, by, uh, being able to bill and claim up insurance. Um, and that is totally contingent on the therapist-owned license. And there's a whole lot of, um, intricacies to all of that that I don't need to bore you with, but my own experience in, in running an O M H licensed clinic, mal health clinic in Lewis County, um, it is, it's, it takes on too much liability for us. So, we're not advising that we enter into contracts where, uh, only part of our needs are being met through our preventive services.
I'm gonna look for a motion on this one.
Second.
Second, Brad. Questions?
Just, just, yes, sorry, just two quick ones. States, the Salvation Army, they're providing, that's five hundred and eleven thousand dollars, is that, would that be a flat rate? Through the contract, I see Huntington's, looks like an escalating contract to five eleven percent, that was going to be flat?
That's true.
And then Salvation Army, they're not providing the home-based services, so those would be strictly office-based services.
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Uh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, then, um, last one, that is the Financial Assistance Division of DSS Homeless Housing Services.
Correct. Here's, uh, this is another one where we, um, we did not, uh, award, um, the lowest bid. Um, you can see that we have, uh, Oswego County Opportunities is who we are recommending be awarded, uh, this contract, uh, for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. That is a, a flat, uh, fee for the five years. Salvation Army was also a flat fee, um, at a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Um, however, uh, again, um, O C O's had a much more robust staffing design. Salvation Army was one and a half workers. O C O is two workers with backup with a program supervisor and director. These are co-located positions right in our shop at DSS in Mexico. And when homeless families are walking through the door, um, we really need to be able to respond right then and there. Um, our housing team and our adult services workers focused on the safety net lines with singles and childless adults. Um, this homeless housing services is paid for through, uh, Triple F S, which is all federal money. There's no local share to this contract. Um, and O C O also has a tremendous amount of wraparound services. They receive, uh, probably about six different, yeah, about six different other funding streams, um, that they can plug in to families when, uh, they're facing homelessness. So, again, very, this would be a very difficult, a scope of work for another provider, uh, to compete with, uh, given, uh, the resources that O C O, uh, has developed over the last decade.
Okay. Um, I'm losing track, did I get a motion on this one yet?
No.
Okay. One motion on this one.
I made one.
Second, anybody?
A second.
Right, then we got time. Uh, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was a stack. Uh, so, you want to move on to the DSS budget?
Now, let's move back to the DSS budget. I see Veronica is just excited, just joining the party here. Oh, yeah. Come on down. Okay, so, you know, before I, I, yeah, we jump into all of this, uh, I do want to just say that we can't do this with long. We depend on our private providers, which we just saw in our last, uh, how much resources they bring, the richness of their experience that they bring to our child welfare work particularly. Um, but, um, also within our county departments, the other departments, and I want to pay the particular thanks, uh, and give a shout-out, first of all, to Cheryl Holm. Um, I wish Nicole was still here to just, uh, give a little piece. Um, it has been an incredible year this year and working this year to be able to, um, provide more services that are going to stabilize, uh, the inmates coming out of jail. Uh, he's been working both in our financial assistance when, uh, men and women are coming out of that jail homeless. Um, he has been providing a lot regarding, um, uh, drug trafficking and, uh, and bringing together all of the law enforcement agencies. Um, for those of you that might also sit on that public justice, uh...
Public safety.
Public safety, uh, committee, um, you've probably heard a lot about what's been happening this past year. Um, that has an impact on our constituents, um, and it's been a very positive connection. I also want to thank D A Oaks, our district attorney, um, has really worked well with us in providing, uh, a, more of a, of a response and being proactive, uh, in our adult services with our, uh, financial exploitation cases, taking those support, but particularly in child, uh, welfare, when we are serving... But particularly in child welfare, when we are serving families who are also involved in the criminal court side, who they're in family court and criminal court, where we're working very closely with the DA's office. I know we had a, a very high-profile, a few high-profile cases, really, in the past two years. And, and I just want to observe that DA Oaks goes above and beyond for these kids. To the point where, uh, some children were placed with a grandmother and, uh, we had a hard time securing some beds and DA Oaks went right out there and just took care of it. I insisted he send me the bill and we did pay it, didn't worry Veronica and, uh, reimburse. But, uh, there wasn't anyone who could go in there and do that as quickly as DA Oaks. So I just wanted to give both Sheriff Hilton and DA Oaks a shout out for their work with us this past year. Moving forward though, in 2020, um, I have certainly been right up front with all of you this past year, just how scared I am for children in our community. And how scared I am for our caseworkers. They have an incredible job to do. This is not easy going up and cold knocking on a door for children who have been reported for child adultery. And the situations we are walking into look very different than they looked even ten years ago. I have never seen anything like it in the forty years I've been in this business. The ID drug abuse, the heroin use, uh, synthetic drugs, um, it is just beyond belief, uh, the kinds of things that we encounter. Earlier this year, we brought in Judge E B. You heard him be very descriptive, um, of a few cases. And, uh, and these are our tough times for people. We also saw in child welfare this year, bringing our new attorneys in, in 2019 in January. And, um, I, I can tell you that, um, I'm not easily impressed after all of this time. But I am very impressed with these three young professional women who have devoted this past year to the children in our community that have been maltreated and are the neediest of the needy, as far as I'm concerned. I am asking for some pretty big lifts this year from, from you. I gave it a lot of prayer for thought. I didn't just throw this stuff in and, wow, we'll see what'll stick. I hated to provide you with a budget that asked for eleven new positions. I wouldn't have done it if I didn't feel like it's a critical time in our community. And I can't keep up and I can't expect our folks in the field, our attorneys, we have put on them some impossible expectations. That's not fair. Not fair for a caseworker to go home at night, having not been able to do a good job in their own eyes and feel like all the bases have been covered on the caseload. That's not fair. And if something happens, I will take responsibility for that. I don't expect them to. And that's really, when it came down to it, why I have proposed these eleven positions. I did it because I'm asking you to join me in recognizing what a critical time this is and to champion this for us with the rest of the legislators. So we'll jump into the numbers with that said. The numbers, it starts, if you didn't find it yet, it starts on page ninety-nine. And I also had provided you a projected budget. A PowerPoint.
It's in the packet.
And the PowerPoint, yeah, is in the packet.
Do you want to go through that or do you?
Sure, you know, it's only twelve slides and it gives a real high points here. And then it ends with what the asks are, so we might as well, uh, give that a go. So, the total appropriation that we're asking for is seventy-two point one million. And revenue out of the local share is at thirty-six point three million. So that's our state, federal, um, those are recoveries. Somebody wins the lottery and they've been on public assistance, we capture that, those kinds of things. So the local share we're requesting is thirty-five point seven million, of which twenty-three point seven million is not a paper. Please keep in mind, as we go through these slides, you know, um, that not all the federal and state dollars are in the county budget. That in fact, um, we've listed just three here. That, uh, like SNAP is twenty-five point six million and that doesn't show up in our budget at all. That comes directly from the state with the E D T card that's swiped. These are predominantly working for. ALIS, remember, um, ALIS was the asset limited, um, income constrained, um, employed population for working for. Home energy assistance, five point one million. And that, you know, we spend every penny the feds give us free. And then, uh, we, we collected fourteen point one million dollars in child support, uh, in one year. And a million of that reimbursed cash assistance, reimbursed here. I pulled, I pulled Medicaid number out of there because DSS, remember, we don't bill anything for Medicaid. It's, yes, it's in my budget and it is a hefty share, about a half million every week. But, um, you know, the biggest expense is nursing homes. We receive a hundred percent reimbursement for our administrative costs. So our social welfare examiners, the seniors, all the, you know, the big banker boxes that come in for chronic care cases for those nursing homes, all of that and processing application and establishing eligibility per, we are state E O H, is, is, uh, is reimbursed to us. So if you take out Medicaid and those weekly shares, um, then, you know, what is left is about twelve million dollars in local shares, what we're looking for. And what is driving an increase between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty? Our increase is one point two million. And where is that mostly? Well, there's your monthly average of children in foster care, a hundred and twenty-eight percent increase. So we've gone from an average of seventy-four kids every day in care in twenty sixteen to a hundred and eighty-seven kids in care, um, as of September thirtieth. That was here. And what do you think all that foster care placement is doing to our caseloads? About fifteen cases, uh, for, for foster care caseworker and look at what that was. What do you think that does to court activity? Now, we can hear from Karen a little bit about just what that looks like in terms of court special. You know, our funding for foster care, federal four E, uh, funding's the only uncapped source of funding. But there's a whole lot of eligibility and documentation needed. There's a lot of changes going on at the federal level that is going to impact four E. And we are scrambling to put things in place so that we don't lose any of that money. Pop quiz, Veronica, about how much four E money do we get?
About seven hundred and fifty thousand.
And then we have our foster care block grant and our Triple F S money that we put in there, and that's all capped. Once we reach our cap, we have no more to spend. And so we're looking, we looked at, uh, an increase of three million dollars in two years. Other increases in the twenty twenty projected budget, uh, our protective and preventive services contracts increased three hundred and seventy-one thousand. The local share for that is a hundred and eighteen thousand nine, uh, seven hundred and ninety. We're asking for eight social workers. We are asking, uh, for an additional attorney, an additional paralegal, and one senior typist. And of course, the other impact on our budget this year was the union contracts with a wage increase overall of two percent.
So you see my eight caseworkers, not social workers, right?
Eight caseworkers. Did I say something?
Yeah.
Well, it kind of, yeah, I do. Um, and then the risks of escalating costs in twenty twenty. You know, these are the risks that I see, um, I think, again, we're going to be able to, to, to do some good work in twenty twenty surrounding, um, some of these risks and try and decrease the risk. But PINs placements are not going to be, um, paid for at all. It'll be all on the local county guide if there's PINs placement. And judges can still place ones. A lot of that is, uh, our county attorney and our probation, so we've got to work closely. This Friday, we actually have a meeting set up to discuss how do we move forward here. DSS has been scrambling in the past month and will, uh, continue to get all of the kids who are currently in non-secure, out of non-secure by one one. And they're not grant-grabbing these kids yet. Come one one, if we got kids sitting in non-secure, it cha-ching, cha-ching, it's on us. Uh, and then we've got, um, the twenty twenty budget is proposing eight million for foster care. You know, I, I'm hopeful that we can, uh, find some ways, uh, to keep kids, um, at home and in the community. I certainly need to work more with family court on that. We have, uh, started a new court improvement project. So we're now meeting, uh, with, uh, our family court judges and, uh, after yesterday, uh, Judge-elect Benedetto, uh, will be a, a partner. And I'm very, um, pleased to be able to, to work with Tom. And, uh, I have met with him a few times, uh, to, to talk about, uh, what's on our plate at DSS and how we move forward. And then there's always the risk of an economic downturn. Anytime that happens, our caseloads go up in financial assistance, uh, the asks, uh, for emergency housing, all of those things go off with any economic downturn. So we can all just really pray that, um, uh, that things look very brightly now for us. And I am anticipating and optimistic that twenty twenty will also be bright for us. So here we go, on page ninety-nine. The first thing really up on page ninety-nine is that new DSS attorney. In, in the packet was a memo I had done back in August, uh, and it did give you, uh, some data there. We also put in the PowerPoint some data. But how about we hear from you? What do you think's going on over there at court?
So, in Oswego County, our caseload is extremely high for block duty use cases. So right now, there's only three of us handling everything. So we have, a big issue we have right now is we have so many judges in the mix. So we have, um, while Judge Nelson was kind of transitioning in, we had Judge Todd coming in to help with cases. So at some points, we have between three and four judges going at one time. We also do all the support court, so we bring all the petitions for DSS for child support. And it, sometimes we have both of those going at the same time. So logistically, without even just the caseload, there's, most days, not enough of us for all of the judges. And just for a little bit of perspective, so just in October, we had eighteen trials scheduled. We had seven permanency planning hearings, kind of just, I don't know if you don't know what one is, just to kind of see where, you know, kids are in place, you know, where we are, you know, are they ready to go home, what are we doing with the family? Which also can result in hearings, so you have to prepare for those. We had a hundred and ten other appearances that were just maybe like a pre-child conference or initial appearance. We also had twenty J D in PINs cases going. Sometimes we're in on them, if they're a placement case, then we are in on them, but they also come from the present agency. So there were a total of a hundred and fifty-five appearances just in October. So, for the three of us, that hundred and fifty-five does not even include support court. So those are, if you're in support court, that kind of is like a half-day event. So it kind of just ties one of us up. The county attorney's office has been helping us with coverage to kind of meet the needs, but right now, we're a little short-handed. So another attorney position would be great.
We also have fair hearings at the Mexico office. And so for those fair hearings, uh, we need to have our attorney there. So they have that on top of the fraud cases and the Medicaid cases and the complications that result within all of those scopes of work, um, that require our attorneys to research and, uh, give opinions on.
We also do circuit court too. So that's not too often, but sometimes we're out there and that's different locales, so that can be a little challenging. Then on top of, obviously, we have to, you know, review petitions, trial fraud, meet the caseworkers, all that stuff. So, like, it's pretty fact-down.
Any questions for you?
No, I mean, it sounds like you've done a great job. You know, we're appreciative. It sounds, uh, like it's been very effective. It's been good for morale. It's been less expensive, uh, so it sounds like you're doing a outstanding job over there. It's nice to meet you all for the first time.
Thank you.
And, um, you know, keep up the good work and we're going to try to bring in one more, one more helper.
I greatly appreciate it.
Plus staff. Any other thoughts, anybody? It's nice to meet you. Uh, okay, let's keep rolling.
So we're going to keep rolling. Uh, there really is, uh, you know, the, uh, page one hundred, uh, page one hundred and one. All of that is, is, uh, status quo, other than the two percent increase, which is why you would, uh, see a little bump up. Uh, that was the union contract. Then we get down on the bottom of page one oh two. Well, you know, just again, the account clerk and the part-time account clerk, you see those are zeroed out from twenty nineteen adopted, those were Veronica's, uh, two, right? Both of those were your position, right? And, and so when we get down to that personal services line, there's the increase there between, uh, five point eight million and six million, uh, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The vast majority of that, again, being the two percent increase. Page one oh three. You want to speak, uh, Veronica, to our legal fees and our I T increase? Five four three three zero zero, legal fees, forty-four to eight.
Five four three three, um, the, the, the fees were originally developed to help us hire a, for an additional attorney. That really isn't working out the greatest for us, so, um, just, he's just not as available as we would like him to be. And, um, the, the only other court cost that we would have, if we did have an additional attorney on staff, would be then just for appeals and that kind of thing. So we needed to put a little bit in there just in case we do have to have an appeals. This year so far, good job, girls. And then what was the other one you wanted me to speak to?
And then the I T, that was a, you know, we went from twenty nineteen adopted at three hundred and ninety-five thousand. That was five four three eight zero zero. And then that bumped up to ninety-nine one thousand.
The reason is, is because we worked with Finesci, um, because the I T department does a lot of work for the Department of Social Services, but we need to actually see that in our vet. work for the Department of Social Services, but we need to actually see that in our budget to be able to claim that. So IT will have a revenue line now of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, and then I will be able to put that through our claiming process and get some, get some revenue back to the county for that. So it saves them some money and then we get a little bit of money, a little bit of that back as well.
Yeah, it's worked out, I think, well for the county in centralizing those IT services. Bravo to Phil, Greg, and John Booker to come up with that plan and we were all very willing to embrace it. It gave DSS frankly, a very, a deeper bench. We have, you know, if, uh, we only had two before and sometimes they were both out and no one knew our system. So it's been really win-win for us. I did want to point out, you'll see on page one oh four up towards the top, you'll look at that third column and down, one, two, three, four, five. NCP, that is non-custodial parent. And you'll see we went up. That's because our revenue went up. We wrote another grant and, uh, is that OTDA or OCFS?
That's OTDA.
OTDA. OTDA provided us another thirty thousand. I had reported that out to you quite a while ago, but now you, you see this right in the budget book. Safe Harbor, we did just receive a notice today. They're actually getting us fifty-one thousand, not fifty thousand. Don't know why we got that extra thousand, but we'll take it. And that's just how quickly our budget changes. You know, as I was looking through this before I came, I thought, well, there's fifty-one, not fifty, we just got that today. You know, that's how quickly things change in the DSS arena. Everything else is pretty standard through the rest of this page. Same in page one oh five. And that's where we get down to our seven, uh, sixty, seventy lines with adult and family services. And you can see we're going from five point eight million to six point five million, which is seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars additional in this budget. Page one oh six, we were initially asking for two senior caseworkers and you can see in three quarters, two-thirds of the way down the page or so, those zeros and zeros and then our request, and then it went back to zeros and zeros. So we did delete the addition of the two senior caseworkers. And that is because we're recognizing that we never have a four point five caseworkers. So as people are leaving, if we have someone to come in that's gone through the more than six months of state mandated training until we can get them placed out there in the field, then we are, we'll be on our way. And that really leads us to page one oh eight in our ask for eight new caseworkers. And I would ask Sarah, if you could join us up here, that would be wonderful. And then we will talk a little bit about the other two positions in legal services and I'll have Kathy talk a little bit to that, but, but there's our eight caseworkers right There has been some, you know, very scary situations because of our, our caseloads. Our, our caseloads are very high and we have to have the people who are experienced have gotten through the training. Sarah is an amazing manager under CPS. That's where most of our vacancies end up occurring, is in CPS. So with that said, if you want to just give some of your own observations, feedback, I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
That's okay. I think part of our issue is it takes so long for people to be trained to go in rotation. The, the training process is so extensive and the amount of knowledge and skills that they have to have before they go knock on a door for the first time. It takes, it takes a long time to get those skills. So when you take that into consideration with the amount of turnover, just in general with a new workforce coming in across the country, we end up with usually around thirty percent turnover. So we can't train people fast enough to rise, to, to raise our level of skilled caseworkers able to handle cases. Fortunately, five hundred rotation this week, however, I have three who are not trained and I still have seven vacancies that I hope to bring in on December ninth. But then that training process will take a long time for, for them to be able to go in rotation. We have people out on medical, some as a result of the high caseloads that we've had, you know, issues associated with that. So overall, last week, I had about fifty-three percent of the amount of people I should have able to take reports. This weekend, it bumped up to sixty-four with the, the new people that we have. You know, one of the other issues this creates is that the state mandates no more than fifteen investigations per CPS caseworker. And currently, right now, with the people I have, not including the five that just started this week, we had seventy-five percent of our caseworkers had higher than the state-recommended average, which is very concerning because they're not able, as Stacy said, to make the mandated case contacts and see the kids that they need to be seeing to assess for safety. So, um, you know, that leads to burnout and it leads to the whole cycle repeating itself. So.
Fifty-four percent was the CPS though.
That's just CPS.
So when I looked at caseworker turnover in twenty eighteen, we lost twenty-five, twenty-five caseworkers over the course of the year. And of those, uh, twenty-two were long-term employees. So some retirements, some transferred to other units because they couldn't handle continuing in the caseworker role. And then the remainder either moved to other jobs or they wanted to be stay-at-home labs because we get a lot of people who are of the age where they're having families that are entering the, the roles of a caseworker. Around this time last year, we started the training initiative where we have the classroom for their caseworkers. And since then, we have been able to retain about sixty percent of the trainees that have come in. So we've trained about twenty-seven caseworkers through that, through that time period. And then of those who have not stayed, they either were able to be weeded out as not appropriate for that role, or they, they self-disclosed that they just could not handle this work, that they preferred to do something else. Some of the hires that we have brought back for people who had left, but were willing to do the work part-time. So we were able to fill one position with two part-time people so that we could have experienced people to lighten the load a little bit. But it looks like we're really shifting so that even though our turnover rate is staying pretty flat, the majority of it now are the brand-new people because we're doing such, so much of a better job without upfront training and making sure that we're hiring the right people to stay in those jobs. So the addition of these eight caseworker positions will allow us to have that many more candidates in training all the while so that we can more readily and more quickly replace the people that we lose during that training period. Be able to keep up, keep up the chances that we have a fuller staff capacity to handle the caseload.
Can I just add too, when I said seventy-five percent had more than the state mandate, those investigations that they have, more than fifteen of, are not overdue investigations. Those are current investigations that are continuing to come in.
Right. Yeah. That's, I'm glad you made that point, Sarah, because we have kept our committee well-informed about caseloads and that some of those high numbers were because we, we just couldn't get the paperwork done, right? And then you heard about what Sarah and Carrie Bensing did, and we were able to clean up a whole, we took shortcuts and the state knows we took shortcuts, but we clean those up. These are cases that are, where I've got to be out there in the community. Sarah, anything else that you want to?
No, just the, the more bodies we can get, the better opportunities we have for my services.
CBA is actually the one, Child Protective Advisory Council, was the one that came up and, and looking at all the data and the numbers with that second point of eight.
Just a question with these new positions. I mean, do we have, like, if it was go, yeah, go up and get these eight, do we have people waiting to get hired and to move quickly on?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we've worked with HR and we're now offering that a family board meeting so that we have a sense of flow of people. And a lot of outreach to the colleges as well.
Good.
And a new website is going to be in terms of recruiting young people into civil service because they'll be able to go online, apply and do the PayPal or whatever they can versus a handwritten hard copy with a check or a money order, which is impressive. That really does, believe it or not, kind of, people from using that.
So as it sits right now, we have, we do have vacancies or we do not have vacancies?
We have seven vacancies that we are looking to fill in early December.
And the expectation is there is a roster there that we can fill those places with. The idea would be we need to add more so that as they fall away, we got a bigger base. Is that right? I mean, ideally, the thought would be perfect world, everyone sticks, and now we're actually overstaffed, which would be, in your eyes, a good issue, we're going to be able to achieve the best. The question would be, we've, we've done quite a bit of work, you know, we spent a million dollars on software, we've changed the training process, we've done quite a bit because we saw that this is a big issue, that retention is a big issue. It looks like it's actually starting to work, which is wonderful, you know, we're all super excited to see that. If you were to follow this to the logical conclusion that the work that we're doing to reduce turnover is working and we're creating a larger base to draw from, we could ultimately end up overstaffed. That's a fair statement, right?
That is.
Again, that's, that's.
If all of a sudden, there was no, there was very limited turnover, we could become overstaffed. I can tell you, none of my watch. What we watch, what I watch is, is caseloads. When we've got caseloads covered, people are doing their job and covering all the bases they need to on those caseloads, we would stop hiring. Right now, we have budgeted eighty-four point, we have actually eighty-six point five, but I don't count the two caseworkers. One is an APW and APW pays the local sheriff and the other that mental hygiene has embedded in financial assistance. So those two caseworker positions don't really serve us, right? As far as our caseloads. But eighty-four point five do. And if we had all eighty-four point five filled at all times with people who can work autonomously, they're all trained, our caseloads would look good. We would be fine. So that's, that's my target. My target is always, and Marty as well, is always going to be kind of looking at that. Now, with that said, if we continue to see the kind of escalation that we're seeing in our caseloads, I could need those because the caseload warrants it. But that's really, Tim, what we have to look at. This has to be managed.
I think that would be an important thing as far as, I'm assuming legislators would want to see is that, you know, as we start to manage this and hopefully as this turnover really does start to level out and become normal, you know, when, when we see money moved within budget, it's often from, right, the vacancy lines or other things like that because we're not able to put enough people in those. My concern is that if we have this many actual positions, it is adding more to the budget even if we don't fill that because that's the lines usually we use for other things. So just that idea of, you know, the budget creep piece of it would be something I'd want us to kind of stand on top of and keep an idea of that. I, I don't think anyone would argue that these are positions that are necessary to fill with people who know what they're doing and can work autonomously, but, you know, if it was to get to that point, something we want to stand on top of, I would think, and I'm sure you, again, that, that is something you would do as well, but just as a point.
That's exactly right. Yeah. Yeah.
And actually, if it was to get to the point where we were able to have tomorrow, everyone fully staffed with people who know what they're doing, might be able to say, okay, well, we're getting these, these ratios down, maybe then you do approach one of the other schools and say, look what APW is doing. Can we maybe spin off to this and this? And then, then you get those local sheriffs covered in another way, so there's other opportunities.
That's exactly right, Tim. I agree, Sarah. Yeah. It's just right now, I can't afford to send experienced people out to schools right now.
Well, they're also not knocking your door down to put them in.
They're not.
They should be, it seems like.
Yeah.
See how it works in APW.
Are we ready to go on from caseworkers to the paralegal there? I'm asking for a paralegal and senior typist. We just reflected on page one oh nine. Those two would be part of our legal services team. They would be working with our attorneys. And Kathy actually is the gal who oversees all of that, so.
If you're not at the table, we stand here.
And Kathy, I, I know Kathy is on a timeline, so she really needs to scoot out.
She's been incredibly patient so far.
Yes, she has. Well, you got to have some patience to do what she does.
So basically, the main issue is that prior to hiring in-house attorneys, we had contracted with Nelson Macher, who had their own support staff to help with such things as filing motions, sending letters to court and things like that. When the attorneys came in-house, we lost that extra support staff, which resulted in an increase in the workload for our two paralegals and our two senior typists. As a result of that, they're doing motions, which they've never had to do before, of at least five or six different variety of motions and things like that. With only two paralegals, when one is on vacation, the other one is handling the entire need for petitions. And within the last two months, one of our paralegals was out, which left the other one and who we had to deal or to prepare, emergency removal petitions literally every single day, at least one, if not two. Emergency petitions are time-sensitive and critical to get filing. And that's a lot of stress. So additional, paralegal would help with coverage, would help assume some of the additional duties that they've taken with filing motions. And our, another senior typist would also assist with the, the other types of, you know, sending letters to court and things like that. So that's the basis of our request.
I've seen the typist. Where's the paralegal?
The paralegal, it's just right where all those eight caseworkers live. Yeah, it's right below those eight caseworkers, zero, zero, and then it's the same salary. Yeah, it's right below those eight caseworkers, 00, and then it's the same salary as a caseworker. And, and I want to say, this is some pretty high level of paralegal work. These paralegals aren't just, you know, alphabetized and folders.
Yes, sir. When we, when we put this all together and we started looking at the estimated cost of doing this in-house, we, my understanding was try to take into account the, the cost that would be of creating a new department. We, we must have known that we were not going to have access to administrative staff at Nelson Law Firm, so is there more that has changed? There must be something else going on other than, you know, we didn't realize we needed this, we must have known that. So can you chat a little bit more about what has changed that creates this new need, or did we just underestimate original?
I think there was a little bit above that, I mean, I, you know, I will own that I was the one collecting the data from the Nelson Law Firm. I was giving her grids that I asked her to fill out, I was trying to prone things, like, yeah, you've been doing this, but does it make sense for our legal team to do this? Is this really necessary? But, you know, with that said, you only know what you know. Did I recognize just how many hours and hours and hours that Alison Nelson's, I don't know what they called them, I, I'm not sure they were called a paralegal or a typist, or I don't know what their titles were. No, I, I really didn't. I can tell you right now, I, I was a bit blown away in that first quarter of this year to see just the volume of paper, truly, that we were pushing out the door. But the other piece is, is you saw the numbers. We've also got a huge, huge, just this year, just in the first six months of this year, we have had, well, as Kathy will say, you know, emergency removals every day in some weeks of the month. There's, so there was both going on. I did not estimate appropriately the amount of time back office support was doing that work at the Alison Nelson Law Firm, and I, we also have seen a, a big shoot up and increase in our court activities.
And for every court appearance, the paralegals have some type of role, whether it's preparing the stipulations, our support staff are doing the court summaries, the 18 trials that Taryn had spoke about, our paralegals needed to prep those legal files so that they could be prepared. It's just, the increase in children removed from the home have driven up the number of permanency hearing petition, uh, permanency hearings held, and work that gets associated with those.
We probably have two, this would be adding a third, is that correct?
We have two paralegals, this would be adding a third. We have two senior typists, this would be adding a third.
We're also too drafting all the subpoenas that we're doing, so that the typists are doing subpoenas, which for trial, sometimes it could be three witnesses, sometimes it could be 10 witnesses. If we're getting certified records, they have to send all those out, also judicial ones that are going to the court, so their, their list goes on, it's kind of hard to.
And the one senior typist is preparing orders from every single appearance, and that's a full-time job and it's all.
Great, to, to share this with any of our other legal staff, I don't know what the staffing is like currently with the public defender or the attorney's office or anything like that, but assuming they have enough that satisfies their needs, but.
Absolutely. Can we share any staff?
Yeah, because as far as paralegal administrative.
Sometimes we're conflicting sides of the matter.
You know, our involvement in family court, we could be prosecuting a JD or an AO, and the department may have a 10 with the same family, and there are times where we agree with the department, there are times where we don't agree with the department. As far as recommendations to the court, what I would note, which I haven't heard, is that the department has a role outside of family court as well, with adult protective and Supreme Court and guardianships, Medicaid lien recovery, and other aspects, fair hearings that, that you haven't mentioned today, but I've.
I did before you.
Okay, that would probably, probably be, please, helpful that you have those people.
Yes, exactly, for all of those tasks and all of that.
Do you have room for all these new positions in the building?
Yes, actually, what we're doing.
Are they willing to walk to work?
We have six child caseworker aides that do nothing but transportation, and we will be looking to move them out of our building to Catholic Charities, I think I talked with you about this transportation plan, along with all the Catholic Charities transporters that we contract with, along with a new launch of volunteer transports. So they'll actually be, we'll have six new spaces pretty close to where Kathy's team is. And right outside the door, really, not too far, steps away from where our attorney's private offices are.
Just in further answers to legislature stall, the other legal departments, as you know, the DA is understaffed coming into the new age of the criminal justice reform mandates. And public defender's office, the money that they have is restricted to use just for the public defense, so sharing a public legal, paralegal with them, they would not be able to use that money to fund those positions.
I did put in the packet, I believe, the spreadsheet, you saw this spreadsheet this time of year, last year, about how much money can we save with the one and only proposer we had for contracting out legal services, which was not a fixed number, that firm was not willing to fix the number, but to say, this is what it will minimally cost you if caseloads go up, we may have to hire more people, and so your cost could go up. And, and that contract that legal was, was looking for $605,000. But we were also not able to do 75% reimbursement for, for a variety of reasons. So when I was looking to put these three new positions in our legal services team, we redid this spreadsheet, and you can see, we would still save money. It's not, it's not as much as we would have saved without the three, but we can't do the job without the three, so.
Any other questions about that? Okay. Yeah, I think it's still more efficient and saves us money, and increases morale, all good things.
All good things.
So I think we're good on those positions, shall we keep rolling? And if you have to leave, if you're freezing, you can come in.
Thank you very much, Dave, I appreciate you being here. I think we, again, it's good to put a face to some of the work we're doing here. And if you need to get advice, it's up to you, you're welcome to say it, but. So page 110, you can see almost up towards the top, ABPTS, line 54, 55, 00, and that's adoptions, and we reduced that by 50,000 trending, because of the trending. You can see our foster care, we're asking from last year to this year, on the 2020 draft, on Phil's draft, of another 250,000. I do want to say that Phil was great working right with Veronica and I when these kinds of decisions were made. We also have under preventive and protective contracts, that's where you're seeing that additional 371,000 and change, of which about 118,000 and change is local share. And then raise the age, that bumped us up, but remember, that's 100% reimbursed, so the revenue line also reflects that same amount. Veronica, is there anything in this page that you want to point out, other than those that I?
No, those are the ones I could point out.
Okay, now we're on to medical assistance. Move the reduction of the cap. And see our Medicaid, figure jumps right out at you, doesn't it? Everything else is pretty standard across those lines. Page 112, there's a difference in there, and that's that, about halfway down the page, SDSJP, juvenile delinquent. So SDSJP is one of those programs that New York State OCFS says, it can be in probation or it can be in DSS, counties you decide. The chairman of our Board of Legislators has to sign off about which depart, you know, whether it's the department or whether it's probation, that takes control over PINs prevention, basically preventing placement, and, and JD. We have moved the, not only the federal state money over, but that is a 38% local share, and we moved that local share over to probation as well for next contract. We were not taking any of that money ourselves at DSS. All of that money was either going to probation, so we can already bridge in the gap, and youth court, youth court with, with our youth. So it made most sense, since those are referrals coming out of probation, they do that scope of work. You know, with that said, we are always willing to take a referral from probation, we have a youth services team that will enter and try and do some community-based work so that we're preventing placement, providing some relief to parents, maybe even arrested placement, which probation can't do, so we work cooperatively with them. But the fact remains, when it comes to juvenile delinquents and placements, it's, it's really on the county attorney and our probation, so it made good sense to, to shift that over.
To see if there's no effect with reimbursement?
No.
I'm going to, I'm going to assist them with it for the first, sorry.
Yeah.
We need to do a designation change from the chair to OCFS to let them know, or are you just passing through money to probation?
The whole SDSJP plan was actually done by probation.
Okay, all right, so it's already been done, okay, good, okay, good.
Yeah, designation was done, all of that.
Yeah.
Anything else on that, she actually, I forget, Veronica?
Nope, I, I transferred the rest of, it runs on the federal pistol year, so the end of this year, October through December, is now in probation, so I did a budget map to move the remaining, our budget over there.
Want to speak to the state training? School? As best we can.
State training school is, I don't even know why they call it that, but there must be some history there. This is kids who are in some kind of detention or another, and it is generally invoiced to us years after the fact, I think right now we're paid through fourth quarter 2014. And basically, what happens is the state will do a quarter at a time, and we don't even know what the per diem rate is. And so what you see every year with the state training school is that we budget a certain amount, amount we think we're going to need, and then we roll over those previous years because we haven't been invoiced for them yet. So every year, that's why you see that rollover into that account. And then once we've cleaned, cleaned out that year, if there's anything left over, then I don't roll that amount out over.
So what's that amount then?
It's varied from year to year, I can tell you that when I do October's reconciliation, I just got it, it was $157,000, and it was for the whole year of 2014, so it's gonna, you're gonna see it, it's just not in there yet because I have to wait until we have the October claims done to do the reconciliation.
But you can see, you know, I know, right to the right, but, you know, these are $1,000 a day placements.
Yes, $1,029.51 a day.
There are OCFS placements through family court for designated felons, juvenile delinquents that are persistent problems, and on the designated felony placements, they can be held up to the age of 18 to be extended at discretion of OCFS, 21. Now, I don't know how that changes with the reform, but OCFS could continue the placement in their discretion if they think it helps the youth. And a thousand bucks a day, it's not the Ritz-Carlton, it's industry in OATC.
Yeah.
These other states, so, yeah, they're old facilities in need of repair.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, every year at our conference in January, they tell us, we're going to catch them all up this year. So that's the whole, like, nervousness about making sure I'm rolling the money for the unclaimed years yet, because they always say they're going to catch up. And one of these years, if we don't roll that money, I'm afraid that's the year they're going to catch up.
So that, there's a special secret account in the treasurer's office where all of these bills that we've been getting, that it just keeps accumulating in that rollover account until the point where, okay, the state's going to take that money now, state's going to, and they just keep taking them little by little.
If they do close out a year though, I, we're, we're budgeting that, you know, 200 and whatever it is, 232,000, a couple of years ago, they closed out a year and it was only 109, it was a year that we just didn't have a lot of placement, and I didn't roll the rest of that.
Right. Okay, we can move on to page 113, and I don't believe there was anything. Safety net, the safety net we did decrease in the last round, 2020 draft. And I will say that, you know, all of our financial assistance programs, if you notice in the 2019 DSS annual report, our caseloads have stabilized or taken slight dips. So we're not, you know, thank God, if there's at least one side of our house, when it comes to, you know, SNAP and Medicaid and, you know, all the other benefits, where, where it's, if they're stabilized or, or a slight dip.
Yeah, even the food stamps that are coming from the federal government, the year before was 27 million, now this year it's down like 25.6 million, so that tells you there's less people applying and receiving food stamps in our county.
Yeah, better economy, right, better economy, they're getting jobs, we do a good job on the training side of the house to get them out there and get them in a job, and all that has impact on how many people are receiving benefits in our county. Veronica, is there anything I missed, is there anything you want to pick up on?
No.
If there's questions, we can.
Are we starting to see the foster care numbers trending up yet? I know that lags multiple years, we've had, this is going to be our, I think, our third year with rising, are we, are we starting to see the reimbursement coming up?
No.
We're not yet.
Well, foster care block grant, we did get, we were one of, a few in the state that got a move audition. that removal division.
We, we were one of six counties in the entire state. I will tell you, I just drove to Troy on Monday and attended a four-hour meeting, and a lot of the talk focused on the fact that there were a lot of counties there who are really upset because they've lost a lot of their foster care block grant. The reason that counties are losing it is because a lot more counties are trying to use kinship care more, but when you use that, the program costs go down. And unfortunately, the state does not look at administration cost for foster care, they only look at program costs. And so because of, as we go counties, program costs have gone up, because our numbers have gone up, we have continued to see an increase. Now, that being said, I will tell you, the state made it very clear that they do not have any intentions of increasing the amount of money overall in the entire state that they're going to put towards foster care alone.
Especially with what I kept you briefed on, with that whole Families First FIPSA, Families First Preventive Services Act. So that's that federal act that says, don't put your kids in care and definitely don't put them in congregate care because we're not going to pay for it.
So if we get more, it's coming from somebody else.
Well, and the problem with that is with the FIPSA is that if we don't have the program money to spend on preventive measures, then that becomes a local share for the county. So in that respect, the fact that our numbers have gone up are actually going to sort of keep us a little saving grace in the fact that we, our funding has gone up instead of gone down like a lot of other counties.
Well, just call me Pollyanna, but I am counting on that opioid pharmaceutical settlement that the lawsuit went off. That we're going to get some money and I'm going to be able to have a, you know, a great response in preventive services, which will only benefit, you know, DAO, Sheriff Hilton, Dave, you know, it'll benefit all of us if we can have a better community response. My ask was small this year. I had told you earlier in the year, I really wanted to take some of that foster care, increase money, and shift it into preventive. I chickened out. I got cold feet. I just keep seeing these go up, and I just thought, we can't fall short on having enough budgeted for those foster care expenses. I'm not sure Phil would have allowed me to do it.
Okay. Questions? Questions from the JD95s? Anything? Okay. I will look for a motion to pass the DSS budget as presented.
I'll make that motion. To clarify, this, everything presented, Phil, is what we are expecting to see in the numbers you've already provided us.
Yeah, the award of those contracts was included in the draft.
Positions as well, right?
Yeah. I'll send a motion for a brand this one for the night.
I was just joking about getting paid extra for a second.
You know, if you get your name and send it more for a second, so...
But Rich guaranteed us that we were going to get this money that you were going to learn that lawsuit money, so...
Which lawsuit money?
The opioid.
Oh, the opioid? That is a class action. Most counties are staying in the class action, which is what our attorney's recommend. And it's going to be a long lead. And the other thing you need to know is they find enough money in the world to pay for all the problems they've started to create, so... But I've seen on forecasts for revenue for the lawsuit, we'll let you know, but it'll be something.
Hopefully it's better than the Horizon one I got a buck eighty-seven for.
Yeah, it should be better than that.
Should take a five out of three dollars.
Got six months of showtime.
Hey, Rich? Yep, you still in, right? Can you give me a call on my cell phone in 15, 20 minutes?
Sure. Do we have an executive session checking this or no?
No.
We don't.
To make, to...
Yeah. You think we're talking about?
No, no, no.
Okay, sure.
Call him 15, 20.
Yeah, I want to say, we're done. Are we voting on this now?
We have a person, we have a person.
We're all in favor of the DSS budget as presented. Any opposed? Okay, I look for the appropriate motion.